Good evening. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I invite you to join us. Roll call.
Garrick.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Preston.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here. The library will host the title book creature craft sessions Tuesday at the main library and Thursday at Northport Library. The Homeward Bound Theater Company will be at the main library for a performance of P. The Pirate on July 11th. This event is for all ages and kids and is encouraged to come dressed as their favorite pirate. The annual summer reading challenge continues in the library through August 20th, provides all ages with another summer of interesting and engaging stories, events, crafts, and activities. This year's theme is Oceans of Possibilities, and participants of all ages are encouraged to read every day to complete challenges, earn badges, and win prizes. The Fargo Police Department's annual community picnic will be from 5:00 to 8:00 June 29th at the Urban Plains Park. Local community resources and law enforcement will come together in a casual setting with the goal of educating community members on services available to them in the area, and build upon the department's vision of a safe and unified committee, community. Other, the Great Race, the world's premier old car rally, saved the best for last on Sunday, and a large crowd lined Broadway to watch the finish and welcome racers to Fargo. The race admitted to all contiguous 48 states except Rhode Island and North Dakota, so to solve the problem, the race started in Warwick, Rhode Island on June 18th and finished in Fargo on Sunday, on Fargo on Sunday. Competitors in 120 of the world's finest autos drove 2,300 miles, and the first prize winner received $50,000. Tonight is Commissioner Garrick's last city commission meeting. Tony has served for seven years as city commissioner, and he did not seek reelection this year citing a goal to spend more time with his family, especially his young son Jack, and focus on the remaining four years in his military career. Tony has worked on several initiatives and priorities while serving on the commission, including supporting and advocating for the addition of Fargo Fire Station Number Eight, and serving as a primary elected liaison to the Enterprise and Utility Departments, which during times major expansions to the water treatment plant, landfill and water reclamation plant, and, excuse me, water and water reclamation facility. I want to wish good luck to you, Tony, and thank you for your service to the city of Fargo, and thought we could give you a round of applause. The comms team has a video tonight with the highlights from this year's employee recognition event to start, and we have one other video as well.
I've worked for City of Fargo since September 4th of 2001.
Forty years at the solid waste, all in garbage.
It's nice that the city does this for us, just to get a chance to get together and with other people that kind of started the same years that you did. You get recognized for five years in 10 and 15, and so to see those, that same group of people every five years, it's pretty neat.
I always liked my job, you know, it wasn't just a boring job every day. You got to go and have fun with the guys.
Just what I've seen happen in my 20 years here so far, boy, it's, if that continues, it's really going to be nice in the future.
And then Chief Zabrowski has set up and provided an update on this past weekend's activity. It's a short video of what went on. Chief, do you want to say something as well?
Just no, just further update for the commission of our enhanced traffic efforts along with our partners at North Dakota Highway Patrol. Did 24 stops, 24 citations, continue to work on that, on those dangerous driving and speeding issues in the city.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the order agenda, move an item 26 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, and item 47 to the advisory and oversight committee to be vetted? Is there a motion?
I see move.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second, and then I have a comment.
Commissioner Preston.
So, is there a reason 47 is being moved? I would prefer that it stays on the agenda, and frankly, would also make an amendment to allow public comment on both item 26 and 47.
Is there a second?
Second.
The reason when we walk over the rules of putting something on the agenda for agenda items, there's a couple of other rules that we have in that area. One is a motion has to be suggested, a suggested motion at the end of the topic. And the other reason is oftentimes staff won't necessarily know what the complaint is at the time, so the police force is basically asked on internal investigation to make comments, which they may not be prepared for. The oversight and advisory and oversight committee is actually designed for that, for a citizen to bring something to them of anything, a complaint, and if a resolution came out of that, then it would brought to city commission for a resolution and an action item. It's just a respect for the staff and people that need to do that. If Wes had would like to make a comment, he may make the comment, but it's just that it makes more sense to have that vetted in the oversight or advisory and oversight committee.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Commissioner Preston.
I think this has been real confusing. With the last topic that was attempted to be addressed from the public, there was direction given from the dais, and granted, it wasn't in a motion format, but basically the direction was, bring an agenda item to us, we'll get it on. So, that direction was followed, I think, in this, in this regard. The second thing is, it's confusing to me in regards to how you get agenda items on, and who decides whether that agenda item gets on. No, this one actually was on the agenda. So, it takes a motion, it seems to me, to refer it to the oversight committee, if that's truly what we want to do. The third thing is, it's not clear to me, and it never has been, who is allowed to come from the public to actually address an agenda item. And I'm thinking, you know, most of the time, we usually have specified, open for public comment on the agenda. However, I'm thinking about more recent topic of the Roars Project and the tax exemption, or the TIF dollars that was being requested. In that case, we let Jim Roars come to the podium and speak, so it's that inconsistent application. So, you know, we need rules that are written down and very clear, and that's not truly, I don't think, what exists right now.
Well, actually, we have rules that have about six different aspects of those. I think it's a great time for us to have that conversation. I think we need to reconvene as a commission and try to figure out how we're going to do this, and the previous rules have multiple other sub items that are part of that. So, it does make it confusing for anybody who brings somebody, something to us to know exactly what the rules are. Again, I think that needs clarification by the commission and us to vote on the rules of conduct for the commission, and it's something after an election usually we re-explore, so I think you make great points, it's time to relook at those. And to offer also, when you want somebody from the public to speak, just as you asked, you said, I'd like to have this public comment at these two times, we should have rules around that as well. So, I don't disagree at all with what you're commenting to, and it is confusing, because I had to look back to the rules to see what the rules were. But there's several ways in which 47 does not meet the rules of what we have on our own rules presently, although you wouldn't know that because, you know, we don't all read it this prior to this meeting. Commissioner Garrick.
Who placed it on the agenda?
Kimber placed it on the agenda.
And Kimber places things on the, on the agenda often, every, every meeting. So, I think as long as someone who has that authority to place on the agenda, places it on the agenda, I think that's okay. So, I'm very sympathetic to what Arla is saying, I think we should let him have his time. I've said numerous times that instead of the open mic night, we should have people come to us, say they want to speak to us, have a subject, and they can actually have a conversation with us, so I think this is more valuable, and we'll see, I guess, but then how we've been doing it in the past.
But it's no different than when any commissioner puts any on the agenda, we might ask him to talk to the department head and visit about that. Mr. Zabrowski contacted Westville LeMay and was not able to speak with him about what he wanted to address. He comes in unprepared for whatever these items are, so it makes it a difficult thing for any department head to respond to something if you don't know, quote, what the agenda items are about. Now, the commissioners may have comments to any of the department heads, but it makes it difficult if in public you have nothing written other than an item agenda, but you don't have the items surrounding it that we may be able to respond to. And it just intent, this is a business meeting we have for the city of Fargo, just to make it more reasonable that we get something to accomplish, the idea would be that we could have some data so we could react to it.
That's true.
Understand your commi... Mr. Strand, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Preston.
So, we routinely and fairly routinely see agenda items placed on the agenda by commissioners without any kind of background information. So, again, this needs to be consistently applied, and that's not being...
Agree 100%, and I'm very hopeful that we can do that, rules of conduct as we go forward. Any other comment or discussion?
Could you remind us, remind us the motion, please?
It's two parts, the motion, one is to move item 26 from consent agenda to the regular agenda, and move 47 to go to the advisor and oversight committee.
No, Commissioner Preston amended it.
Preston amended the next part.
What's the amended motion, that's?
Hannah, do you have that, or?
I'm sorry, I had to reboot my computer, I don't have anything.
So, the amended motion was to allow public comment for, on item 26 and 47. In other words, keeping 47 on the regular agenda.
And it was seconded by John, right? So, now we vote on the amendment. Now we vote on the amendment. You voted on the amendment now?
Yeah.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
The original line?
Pepcorn?
So, that's the original.
Original motion.
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
That's the original motion as amended?
As amended.
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2022 meeting? And the June 9th special meeting as well?
So move.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Is there a motion to pursue, to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 40, taking 26 out, that has been moved to the regular agenda?
So move.
Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Regular agenda residents comments. Grace Sumatwa. Grace, are you here? Don Wald? Mic over here, Don.
Thank you. My name is Don Wald, I live with my wife at 12 North Broadway, I'd like to talk to you about the food carts. Last summer and last fall, they were very disturbing. Where, where we live is on the block that Old Broadway is on, and we live towards the track, so we live north of Old Broadway, and we look right over Broadway. There's four condos, there's 12 condos, and four of us look, we're right on Broadway. It's my understanding that the food carts have a curfew, it's 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock or something like that, but the, the two food carts that set up there on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays are there till 3 o'clock or 3:30. And most of the traffic comes from the Old Broadway or other bars when they let out at 1 o'clock, I know they close at 2, but... And so, that crowd is there until 3 or 3:30. There's garbage on the street, there's garbage on the sidewalk, there's garbage across the street, if the wind's blowing, in Bell's parking lot. It doesn't seem like they make any attempt to clean it up or keep it clean. The music is terribly loud, there's grease on the building, they, they put their food cart right in the entryway of our building. We don't own it, but the, there's grease on the building, and it's just a mess. So, I'm just suggesting, when you give these permits, that maybe you might give some consideration to put them away from condos or residences, and I know there's a lot of people living downtown now, so that's maybe difficult to do, but, but that's what I have to say, and so thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll be talking about it as our item went back as well, 26, so I appreciate the comments.
You bet, thank you.
Public input opportunity, Julie Bubblin to talk about Federal Transportation Administration grant preliminary program projects for 2022.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Commissioner Garrick, thank you, I enjoyed working with you. Every year, we have to bring forward, per federal regulations, and have a public hearing on what we call our program of projects. We're allocated a grant every year, this year it will be $3,490,000 in change. This goes into consideration when we do our budget, so the local share for that is, if you go on your first page, is the 2.6 million. So, it's operating capital and planning assistance. So, this is the opportunity for everybody to give input if they would like.
Is anyone present which to speak to the grant budget at this time? Anyone present wishing to speak? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item B, hearing on dangerous building located at 1108 18th Street North. Sean O'Radnick to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm here to address item 42B, a single-story wood-framed structure at 1108 18th Street North. Now, the structure is currently vacant and uninhabitable due to the conditions and the current inspections order. The damage to the structure is extensive, it lacks a foundation, and has been neglected for a substantial period of time. The exact date of the construction of this structure is unknown, but we do assume that it was built sometime in 1928 when the original house was built. The assessing department was not able to provide any supporting valuation for this building due to the fact that it does not have a foundation. The owners of the property have not taken any action or obtained any permits for this structure in the time that we have been watching it. The owners have been served proper notice of violations in this hearing tonight. Notice of this hearing was not in the packet tonight, because it was sent certified mail, and the confirmation from the post office, we didn't receive it in time to be able to include it in the packet. The property has had multiple junk violations spanning back to 2019. There have been 29 total calls on this property, 22 inspections, and nine to police. We anticipate the demolition of this property to be completed in late September of this year. We will continue to watch this property, the other structures on this property are not clearly at the point of being dangerous buildings yet, but if the neglect continues, we will be bringing them to a future meeting. And I do not know if the owners are here to speak tonight, so if you have any questions for me.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair. So, Sean, could, do you try to find out, like, if there was a loan on it, or do you try to contact past owners, or what's the process? Can you talk a little bit about that?
So, we've tried to contact the owners multiple times. The way we understand it is they received this property from dead relatives, relative passed away, and they received the property, and they just haven't done anything with it. We have not found any mortgages or anything on the property at all, so it's a free and clear property. So, we've tried to contact them multiple times, we've given them plenty of time to take this structure down, and it is a small structure, it won't take much to get it down, but we've just had no response from the owners.
Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak to this dangerous building? Come to the speaker.
Hello, I'm Ross Crutch, I'm the owner of the house. I believe you're talking about the shed to the back.
Yes, we are.
The first thing I remember receiving is the certified letter. We'd moved to West Fargo, and we're getting ready to sell the property, but we hadn't been able to finish work, so, actually hadn't been able to start work, because I work at Case, and we're currently stupid busy, so...
Okay, and we have sent notices to the West Fargo address in the past, so...
Yeah. I don't know why the certified's the only one I've seen, but...
Yeah, we, we have copies in the packet of the violations we've sent out and things, so... And if you need any other information, I can definitely get it for you.
Yep.
So, Ross, what's your intent with the building?
I'd, I'd like to actually sell the whole property, but I can get the shed taken down, that is the main issue right now.
And right now, like we said, the other, the garage, the detached garage in the house on the, on the property are not to the point where they would be a dangerous building yet. They are still able to be repaired fairly easily and at a kind of a minimal cost, it wouldn't exceed 50% of the value.
Anybody else wish to speak, or is it just us? Do you have anything else you want to say, Ross?
Uh, no, that's, no, not really.
Okay, closed public hearing, Commissioner Pepcorn.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question, so Sean, can you talk to him and just, I mean, to me, it's a little bit of, if he's, if he's willing to do that, that's probably going to save him some money, correct? And so, I, I think from the perspective of getting it done and, and getting his correct contact information, can we do that? So, so we make sure we don't have, we're sending out certified mail and things like that when the gentleman's right here. I guess that's my thing.
Yeah, we can definitely work with him, I would still prefer that the commission move on this tonight, just so that we have a firm timeline of when things have to be done. But he still has the opportunity through this whole process to take care of it himself without us having, being involved. All he'd need to do is procure a permit for demolition and take the structure down, and like I said, it's small, it shouldn't take much, so...
Commissioner Garrick.
How long does he have? If we pass, you suggested, how long does he have?
Oh, he has until September, the end of September.
Okay.
So, he has plenty of time, he's got about two months, two, three months here, so... And if he needs an extension on it, so we don't have to tear it down, and he's showing progress on it, we're willing to bring it back to commission and ask for an extension.
So, if it went full course, and you proceeded on a dangerous building, he's the owner, if you take it down, the costs of taking that down are special against the property, is that right?
Yep, if, if the city takes it down, the cost is special assessed to the property. If the owner takes it down, then it's at their own cost.
At their own cost. And then, do we have a taxable value on this right now of any sort?
We don't have a taxable value on it, it has no foundation, so the assessing department doesn't put a taxable value on it.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion? I'll make the motion.
So move. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
So, Ross, you need to work with them, you can kind of get this if you need to, if you work with them, and they'll prove that. If you don't, then we'll proceed to taking the building, so, okay?
No problem.
Thanks. C, proposed amendments to items 221 and 222 HUD action plans. Tia Brasseth to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners, good evening, Mayor. My name's Tia Brasseth, I am with the Fargo Planning and Development Department. I'm here to introduce agenda items 40 to C and D, which are two public hearings regarding the city's HUD programs. No action is required this evening, we're in the middle of public comment periods. We'll be back on July 11th for that final motion on the two public hearings that I'm going to introduce for you. So, the first public hearing is for proposed amendments to the 2021 and 2022 HUD action plans. These involve the city's Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, in home programs. The purpose of the amendment is to cancel a previously approved 2022 Affordable Senior Rental Housing project and reallocate a portion of the funds to a similar 2021 project. The developer for both the projects is Beyond Shelter, Inc., who is here this evening, if there are any specific questions regarding these projects. The 2022 rental project that is being canceled, and I'm sure you've all heard of it, is the Plaza 1 and 2 Apartments at the former Kmart site. The Kmart project is being canceled because the timeline and its eligibility have changed, so the developer is pursuing other funds at this time. And the 2021 rental project is the Milton Earl Project next to the Sanctuary Downtown. The budget for this project has increased due to inflation, I'm sure everybody's hearing that, all over the place right now, this is not excluded. A total of $300,000 in home funds would be moved from the Kmart project to the Milton Earl Project to help close that gap. The remaining $500,000 of CDBG funds will be reallocated at a later date and involve another public comment period and hearing. And the public comment period for these changes ends on July 8th with a final city commission vote at the July 11th city commission meeting. The second, the second public hearing that I'm going to introduce to you is for a review of the Home ARP allocation plan and the incorporation of its related one-time funding and activities into the 2021 Annual Action Plan as directed by HUD. The city of Fargo was awarded nearly an additional $1.7 million to its home program for eligible Home ARP activities. This isn't more funding, this is the same funding I've been talking about for a little over six months. The comment period for these items ends on June 30th with a final city commission vote at the July 11th city commission meeting. I also noticed there isn't a copy of this Home ARP allocation plan in your packets, but it is available on our city website, or you can contact me or the planning department, and I can get you a copy. But in summary, what the plan identifies is a need for strong collaboration between affordable housing developers and supportive service providers. This kind of collaboration is absolutely essential for successful housing outcomes amongst our residents experiencing the most housing instability. So, for a little background on the Home ARP program, if you haven't already heard of it, it is part of the larger ARPA program, which is the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Home ARP funding is a special amount set aside for cities across the nation to address issues of homelessness and housing instability. There are four qualifying populations that this program was designed for, including those who are homeless, at risk of homelessness, people fleeing or attempting to flee violence and human trafficking, and other populations experiencing housing instability. So, again, the $1.7 million is one-time funding, and activities for this funding were selected based on needs which were determined through various outreach methods, including a very well-attended virtual public input meeting by several of our housing and homeless providers and developers. We also issued an RFP for the project. We ended up receiving six applications, four of which are being addressed by this particular amendment at this time. However, there might be future amendments to incorporate other activities as needed. So, in summary, these are the eligible activities for the Home ARP funding. During the public input meeting, a poll was used, and in Figure 1, you can see that the supportive services and housing development were the top two highest priorities that our partners addressed or brought up. In Figure 2, which is a breakdown of the supportive service category, you can see that the highest priorities were in housing supports, homeless prevention, and landlord engagement. So, the activities selected for the Home ARP program align very well with the needs identified in our outreach process. The first one is Transitional Housing Project by the YWCA, Lantern Light Apartments. And with a priority for this project is given to applicants fleeing or attempting to flee violence, although anybody within that particular population that was mentioned would qualify for this housing. The YWC's director is here this evening, if there are any specific questions about this particular project. The second is more homeless and homeless prevention and diversion... The second is more homeless and homeless prevention and diversion programming by Sendica and Presentation Partners in Housing. This is a continuation of a highly successful and impactful program that we're already doing with them. I'm sure you've heard me talk about this. We've been working on this stuff for, since 2020. I was going to say for 20 years. It feels like it some days, since 2020. And if you haven't heard of prevention and diversion before, it's basically an approach to keep people housed or rapidly rehouse or house people who are at risk of homelessness or coming out of homelessness. Essentially, it means preventing homelessness or diverting people from entering our community's emergency sheltering system if they don't need that, that level of service. And then finally, operations at the city's Downtown Engagement Center, which offers a variety of services for people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, including healthcare services, laundry, showers, lockers, housing supports, mental health services, and so forth. They are located in the former police building downtown at Second Avenue North and Fourth Street, and they're open from 8 to 8. So in summary, the two public hearings following this introduction are for the items listed on the slide shown. Comment for the first item ends on July 8th. Comment for the second item regarding the special Home ARP funding ends on June 30th. And with that, I would welcome any questions, or you just may open the public comments if you wish, I mean, public hearing.
Is there anybody present who wants to speak to these amendments? Anybody who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion for items C and D?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
No motion.
There's no motion. Yep. Well, we'll be back July 11th. That'll be on.
Oh, for another public.
Yep. We're in the middle of the public comment period.
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Ms. Pastor Strand has a question.
Tia, I'm just curious if, with the shift in that project, the housing not happening at the Kmart building, does that impact the TIF we've awarded anyway at all, or?
That would be a question for Jim Gilmore.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's when that's addressed?
I'm sorry, what was the answer there?
Item E.
It's the next one. We'll talk about it.
Thank you.
Item E on the January revised development agreement with the Grove Enclave, our Tax Improvement Financing District 2021-03, 2301 University Drive South. Jim Gilmore to explain.
As was just noted, this original Tax Security and Financing District was approved in December. As part of that plan, there was going to be 88 units of affordable housing. The developer, Beyond Shelter, had gotten low-income housing tax credits, however, they also needed some HUD resources, the CDBG and the Home Block Grant Funds. Those funds cannot be used on this project. There were some HUD environmental rules that the developer was unaware of. And, and so these, as you just saw, you're planning to cancel that. Now, the Beyond Shelter is still planning to acquire the property. If I can find out which. If you look at this image, Beyond Shelter is still planning to acquire the western portion of that property that's west of the red line, between that red line and the yellow line. They are still working to complete at least one affordable housing projects on the site, probably 39 units at minimum, possibly more. I'll let Dan Mader address that next, so. But the, the development agreement was requiring the development of the 80 units, and because Beyond Shelter can no longer deliver that, and will be delivering a lower number of units, and it'll probably take longer to put that together, we're proposing that the development agreement be revised. And so as long as the developer sells to Beyond Shelter, they'll be in compliance with that, that TIF agreement. You know, the, the developer then would not be responsible should the low-income housing be delayed or, or canceled. The rest of the development is unchanged. The same amount of commercial development is being required. The TIF stays the same at the 1.4 million, used on the same cost, documented applicable cost. The developer will still be at risk. If the development does not occur, they would not receive any TIF funds, so they still need to provide the development. And if the taxes aren't collected, then the developer doesn't receive any. I think we might have some images of, so this, you can see where the yellow buildings are. That's where the affordable housing was going to be. I believe just that northern, when the, the building on the north would, would still be developed. I think, I think they're fairly confident they'll have enough money to do they, just the one building. So the rest of the property, maybe long-term, they can still do something else there, or they've also considered a rezoning to allow it to be offices. The zoning does limit that property to a residential use. So if it's not low-income housing, it'll be housing unless you were to choose to change the zoning. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Austin Morris from Enclave is here tonight along with Dan Mader from Beyond Shelter if they want to make any comments, or they're available for questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Preston.
So Jim, when you're talking about the actual TIF payments going to the developer, will that be held off until the low-income housing actually gets built?
No, no, it would not, because we really don't know when or if. The low-income housing will not likely generate any property taxes if it's in, because you've provided a pilot property tax exemption for that. So, you know, their TIF income would come from the, the red buildings up there that you, you see.
So I apologize. I have not read through every piece of this developer agreement, but, so there's no way to ensure that this TIF is based on us approving it based on the low-income housing being available? There's no way to ensure that that's actually going to happen?
I think Beyond Shelter is under contract, and they intend to close, and they intend to.
Under contract with Enclave?
Yes. Well, there's actually an agreement.
Dan, you want to stand up and explain that, please?
Mayor Mahoney and members of the commission, for the record, my name is Dan Mader. I am the CEO for Beyond Shelter Incorporated. And, and to speak to the question, you know, basically, the, the world is changing fast and furious related to how we assemble our financing. And I believe basically that site, as you see in the slide, had some environmental conditions and some challenges. And the TIF is basically set up to address those, basically clear the site, clear some environmental remediation related to previous uses. And that, once it's accomplished, will allow us to move forward with a clean site. There was some contaminated soils that just recently got removed from the site, and a little bit of work yet was done this week. And so I believe the TIF is supporting the potential future development of that site. And our plans are right now to basically take a look at the, the financing that's been assembled and work towards a groundbreaking of this fall, basically for, like Jim said, 39 units of affordable senior housing. That'll leave a portion of the land to the south, and that is still to be determined. But essentially, we can't move forward until the remaining environmental cleanup is done and basically certify that it was done completely. And I believe the TIF is set up, and, and I believe that's what Enclave is relying on, the TIF is to, to make the site usable and buildable, and so it can be redeveloped.
Ms. Garrick. I'm sorry, are you finished?
I have a question for Dan.
Okay, Ms. Preston.
So it was originally 80 units, and, and now you're thinking it's going to be how many?
We're going to have to break it up into a smaller chunks. And so our plan B is, is to do a 39-unit project, and then look at the potential of additional, an additional project and/or, like Jim said, basically what would be a best use. Prior to the site being rezoned to multifamily to accommodate the site, it was zoned LC, limited commercial. And so in the future, if we can assemble another project for the, the remaining land, we would possibly look at a reuse of that site, and a limited commercial could be retail and/or offices. And the reason we're thinking that is, is at the same time, Beyond Shelter's capacity, we have grown through the years where we need to basically build an office for, to house the Beyond Shelter team. And so it could be a potential use of the remaining smallest, less than an acre, could be an office building that would basically house Beyond Shelter.
So originally, the original development agreement, they were going to do those amount of apartments, Ms. Preston, but we're also helping them with HUD money, what, what Tia was trying to explain. So the city was obligated to help you with 1.5 million to help build the 80 units. And when the HUD funding came out, then we're unable to do that. So that's why Dan's had to go back to 39 units. And he would love to do 80 units, but he can't find the financing for 80 units. The intent is still to have low-income housing, which is the intent he wants to finish. The difficulty that you brought out of it as well is the TIF does not generate enough money out of it to pay off a lot of the environmental cleanup that they've done. So that's why the other part is thought of perhaps having something that's commercial that pays taxes. So that's an attempt to hide, to help pay the cost of cleaning the site up. So it is a, we're trading one problem for a new problem, but we're still putting low-income housing in there. Ms. Garrick.
Jim, Beyond Shelter wasn't paying into the TIF, were they?
Correct. Yeah, they pay in very little, but their, the building itself would be exempt. If there's an increase in their land value, there could be some smaller amount.
In the land value?
Yeah.
Okay. So in, in reality, you know, we're not, we're not giving Enclave more money necessarily to do the project without this. It's just.
Yeah, they would get the same amount. They're capped at the 1.4 million, 1.3, that's a demolition, and the site cleanup, and then 100,000 for some stormwater facilities.
Yeah, I'm still going to vote against it, but it's not like a dramatic change, in my opinion, as far as Enclave's portion goes. They're not making more money. Beyond Shelter wasn't putting a lot into the TIF in the first place, so if they're not going to build the same thing, it doesn't really matter as far as the TIF itself goes. So I think we should still deny it, but it's not a big change.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Strand.
Thank you. Just to note, for the public's sake, you know, we're, we're in the midst of a project that's unfolding, and, and there's an agreement in place, and, and the developer needed to come to us to modify it. And we're working together with them to, to get, keep going forward. Last meeting, I think we had the Kilbon Group come to us and modify a renewal plan for the riverfront over here. This is the way it should work, is when you have developers that have changes in plans, come to us upfront, work with us proactively, tell us what's going on, and, and then we're all on the same page. We, we've had another recent example with the Newman Project, the Newman Center Project, where that wasn't the case. So I'm just noting that this is the way it should go, and, and we need to remind ourselves going forward to keep these communications always, always open. Last thing I'll say is how great it is to see that block opened up. What a great improvement. It's a physical, visual, tangible improvement what's coming. So this is where we all work together.
Any other public comment? If not, I'll close the public. Part of this, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. You know, it's interesting, Chris Strand, because across the University Drive, Gateway Chevrolet is now cleaning up their site. So you're going to have both of those sites being cleaned up and modernized and look better. So any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcar.
Aye.
Preston.
Aye.
Garrick.
No.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item F, application transfer of Class Z alcoholic beverage license from a DNC lab to Labby's Bar and Grill to be located at 1100 19th Avenue North. Ownership change only. Steve Sprague to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As the mayor stated, this is an ownership change of Labby's, Inc. It is a Class Z alcoholic beverage license. It does not require any food sales, although they do have a robust restaurant operation there. This is in preparation. Dan is looking forward to retirement someday, and it's, he's found a willing buyer that is buying half the business now. At half the business, we trans, we trigger the transfer mechanism of the alcoholic beverage license. And then in the future, as he sells the rest of the business, a little over, little at a time over a number of years, then he won't have to come back to the commission. It'll just be selling the rest of the stock. The operations of the business will remain as, as they were, and it's just a transition plan. This has gone through our Liquor Control Board and does come to you with a recommendation of approval.
So anyone present who wishes to speak to this transfer? Anyone present who wishes to speak? Closed public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Chris, Eric.
Steve, the Class Z isn't transferable unless you're selling the business, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcar.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Preston.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item 43, recommend to accept the results of the Cass County Canvency Board. Steve Sprague to explain.
So when I put this on the agenda, I was hoping that the canvassing board would get the results to me sometime today so that I could actually present the final vote totals. I was, I did not hear back from Cass County as of 4:45 when I came over for the meeting. But the memo does include the results of the election that night. And so mostly, I just wanted to know, put it on there, accept the results of the election, and then just to see if you had any questions regarding the election process.
Any questions by any Commissioners? We just have to have a motion to accept the findings? Have a motion.
So move.
Sir, second.
I'll second it, and then I have a question.
Commissioner Preston.
So what is our legal role in this, Steve? Is it just kind of an informal, yeah, we approve it, or is there an actual legal role?
So I, I would say that, you know, the county is running and conducting the election, and so the results are from the, the county. So it is just accepting the results of the county's election process.
Okay. My second question is, I know there were issues with the election this time. Do we normally get a report from the county, and can we get our report from the county?
So we have set up a follow-up meeting with the county scheduled for August 4th. There, I'm going to attend that meeting, and then there are members of the public that had some concerns about how the election was conducted. And, and so we do have a follow-up meeting conduct, are set up for August 4th. So hopefully, we can improve, work together collaboratively to improve the conduct of the election in the future.
And you'll come back with that report?
I can certainly do that.
All right.
I think also Human Relations Commission is working with you on that, Steve, as well, to make some of their comments as well. So that is set up in the future.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick.
Yes.
Preston.
Aye.
Pepcar.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item 44, discussion regarding University Drive and 10th Street Corridor Study. Jeremy Gordon and Nicole Crutchell.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Congratulations, Commissioner Garrick, on your final meeting here. I got to say, this is one of the fun agenda items. I'm not coming here to ask you guys to pass any motion. This is simply just to be informational. We, as part of our work plan and Metro College's work plan, we, we line up studies to be completed through the years. And we identified the University Drive corridor and the 10th Street corridor in the main stretch of town in the core neighborhoods from 13th Avenue South to 19th Avenue North. So we're just beginning the study. We've procured a consultant. They're about four or five months into the, their work. They're collecting existing conditions, traffic data. And next month, they will start looking for feedback from the customers and users of both those roadways. And just like the mayor had mentioned about the Kmart site, the Gateway site, you know, not very often when we look at old roads. Usually, we only look at the road based on the pavement conditions, but these roads are in relatively good shape. So we're looking at them. How are they working today? What's changing? Could things be improved in the future? That's really the heart of what we're doing with this corridor study. So a little map here. It, it is the stretch where they are one ways. On the left is the south end, where they break off, go to 10th Street, and then travel all the way through neighborhoods, through downtown, and then back up near NDCU to 19th Avenue. This is going to be a kind of a lengthy corridor study. We're just, like I said, kicking it off now. Next month, Next month, we're going to be, the consultant team, as well as engineering, planning and MetroCog are going to be, and Greg's communication team are going to be, put a lot of information out there for people to digest and to comment on at the end of July. The consultant team will be in town. So this year, they're going to be focusing on that. We're going to hear what people say, then, then they're going to come up with some concepts next year. We'll come back to you for an update and then potentially have some strategies for implementation in late 2023. So visioning, maybe I can hand this over to Nicole, she could probably do a better job of visioning than myself.
One of the things we're excited about is this is, you might be asking why we're studying this corridor, and it came up both in the, some of our long range transportation plans, as well as in our most recent adopted plan, the Core Neighborhoods Plan. And so when we look at initiatives that are set aside in the Core Neighborhoods Plan, this is a perfect example of staff taking that, bringing that forward to MetroCog, getting that into the queue of federal-supported projects. And so the consultants that ended up getting this position or this job include half of the consultants that were on the Downtown and Focus Study, so Interface Studio. And so the, the branding, the colors, a little, might look a little bit familiar to you. And they will be here in July, end of July, they'll be doing mass postcard mailings as well, door-to-door knockings. And that will then lead into some stakeholder, small group, focus group meetings. They're going to be studying everything from destination employers, some of our big employers, as well as smaller ones, as opposed to residences, and basically all the people that use those corridors. I think the main thing that our consultant would like to, us to point out is not should it be two-way or one-way, it's more about how do you want this street to look and feel as we look at improvements or identify these portions of the streets as it relates to how you use the street. And so the consultants are really mass facilit, you know, kind of very strong facilitators. We're excited to be working in partnership with engineering. This is an example, too, where we're just starting out the study as opposed to coming to you with the final design. And we want to bring you and the public and our partners along through the process. So, which is why we're in front of you tonight, just to kind of give you a heads up as those mailers and communications start to go out in the public. Jeremy and I did not rehearse. So I think the last point we want to make is really, this is a long study, much like the Main Avenue Study, and people could get a little bit fatigued as part of it. It dawned on us as we were getting ready to go live with outreach that the city commission and the public might not recognize, since it came through the MetroCog process, that we were actually studying this. So we wanted to bring this to your attention as well. And this is their schedule coming up. I think we're here for any questions that you might have or any feedback or dialogue that you might have.
Mr. Pepcorn.
Mr. Terrell, quick, so is it, is it considered both sides are Highway 81, or so are they considered a state highway? It looked on that map that that's what it said, is that correct?
Yeah, that's true.
And so then hypothetically, so then would this be like 80% highway, the state 80% and 10% the city, or how, how would that work?
I mean, yeah, one we've done reconstruction projects on here, I've been involved in three or four of them, since it's a US 10 or US Business 81. Those are usually 80% federal, 10% state, 10% local.
Great, thank you very much.
Commissioner Preston.
So Nicole, maybe this is a question for you in regards to the residents. If you go back to that screen, the next, yeah, there we go. The residents that will be brought into the conversation, I'm assuming a lot of the homes, especially along University, probably are absentee owners and they're rentals. I'm assuming you're expanding out the residential comments beyond just the homes that front these two.
Yeah, absolutely. The neighborhood associations that we have relationships with, that's why we're kind of excited this is so close to the Core Neighborhoods Plan Study, is we still have a lot of those folks engaged from the Core Neighborhoods Plan that would be involved in this. So our neighborhood associations would be involved as well.
Mr. Garrick.
Are you going to be asking about bike lanes? Uh, we're going to be asking for everything under the sun. No, but I mean, if you think about it, we did add bike lanes on here 10 years ago, on a portion. So these really haven't been touched too much over the years, the bike lanes would have been the most recent. But are there other things that we could do to improve things? You know, we hear about some of the speeding complaints in the north end of 10th Street, you know, what can we do? Can we reduce it to one lane? Instead of going two-way, can we reduce to one lane, or can we put on-street parking on there? Are there, are there options, are there marked crosswalks you want? We're going to be looking at a lot of things.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you. I, I guess I'm a tree hugger, but I remember a few years ago, there was some removal of trees, and it became a contentious issue with the neighborhood. I hope that we, we consider the canopy in our study as well, in our research and our observations, and we just don't assume that trees can be discarded with so easily, if that gets to that point.
Any other questions? This is informational only, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 45, application for property tax exemption for improvement of vacant buildings for James Jody Spath. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Strand? Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
You have my recommendation for appointment to the Board of Appeals. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Strand? Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 47, explanation, Wes Filome would like to talk about the Fargo PD's internal investigations.
Wes Filome, he, him, his pronouns, I'd like to start by saying, long live George Floyd and Anjoa Macik. Before I get into this, I just want to say how difficult it's been to get to this moment. You know, Commissioner Garrick shared how easy it would be to get an item on the agenda. I emailed Kimber on Wednesday regarding getting this added. I was told that requests could not be submitted through email, so I had to physically write a letter and drop it off at City Hall on Thursday morning, which I did at about 8:30. By midday, I would receive a call directly from the mayor himself, basically telling me to move the item to the Oversight Committee. I had to tell the mayor at least three different times that I wanted it on the agenda. The following day, by pure chance, I was at work and the mayor just happened to stop by, and while I was at work, the mayor began discussing the Justin Nachatilo case with me, which was, again, completely inappropriate. Then today, I receive a phone call from the city telling me that the Commissioners are going to vote on removing the item from the agenda and pushing it to the Oversight Committee. And again, I just, I don't know of another citizen in this, in Fargo that would have to deal with what I had to deal with just to get to this moment. And so I just want to share that. I've had my mic muted by the mayor in this hall before, and it feels like this was literally another attempt to control my voice, and I'm just glad that greater hell has prevailed today. We are now going on year three of a reckoning in America when it comes to police. Both locally and nationally, police departments are rightfully facing scrutiny like never before. As an activist, when facing the topic of policing in America, my first step is to acknowledge my brother, who has been an upstanding member of law enforcement for almost 20 years. I'm reminded of Sergeant Kristi Jacobson, who if this city is wise, will someday make her the first female police chief in its history. I'm reminded of Sergeant Chris Martin of the Moorhead Police Department, who I meet with often, who makes community building a top priority. I unequivocally know that good police exist. I also know that without a doubt, that officers like Derek Chauvin, Todd Osmanson, and Justin Nachatilo exist as well. Discussing their misconduct does not negate the good that other cops who honor the badge do on a daily. I ask that you all keep that in mind, as I plan to share how continuing to allow Fargo PD to investigate itself is an absolute danger, not only to the cops in the department, but to our community and this country at large. In 2014, an ongoing investigation led by the former Chief Turnus that lasted 23 days would end tragically with a lieutenant under investigation taking his own life. An additional investigation by the city would lead to the Chief Turnus stepping down and giving way to Chief Todd. In 2020, during the largest protest in North Dakota history, the former Deputy Chief Todd Osmanson would be responsible for engaging in a so-called riot while allegedly drinking beer. The former deputy chief was also found to be in direct communication with the highest members of the department, including the chief himself. Todd Osmanson would resign before he could be, before he could be made to answer for his misconduct. He would also be rewarded to the tune of 113,000 taxpayer dollars per year in retirement. Despite the clear conflict of interest, the police department was allowed to investigate itself, only to determine that no one in the department knew of his plan to infiltrate the protest. After overwhelming backlash from the community, the case was passed on to the mayor's office, who came to the same conclusion. It was discovered that the mayor was in the command center with the former Chief Todd, creating additional conflicts of interest. We had now reached two different layers of reviews in which a trustworthy conclusion could not be reached. After Chief Todd retired under extreme public scrutiny, Chief Zabolski would take over. We are all familiar with the uproar that was created several months ago, where the new chief's job would come into question less than two years in office. It was said that there would be a performance plan put into place, but months later, no details had been shared with the public, and when I inquired privately, I was unable to confirm that anything had actually been created. Under the new chief, an internal investigation of Officer Justin Nachatilo revealed that the officer thought it best to stop for coffee prior to responding to a call for a missing child at a local school. It would take 27 minutes before the officer would arrive on the scene due to a line in the caribou drive-through. It would take officers in Uvalde, Texas, 58 minutes to breach a school where 19 children and two teachers lost their lives. Despite possibly tampering with evidence in another case, the Civil Service Board also recommending, also recommending he be terminated, and an appeal hearing which upheld his termination, the city reneged and allowed Justin Nachatilo to resign, meaning he could seek employment with any other department and keep his benefits. On January 5th of 2021, an internal investigation of school resource officer James Abel was opened due to, due to alleged misconduct. After being informed that he would be pulled from the school pending investigation, Officer Abel was advised not to share any information, but decided to reveal to approximately eight students his pending removal. He disparaged the principal and text message, text messages to female students, which would lead to a student-led petition garnering over 1,000 signatures calling for the removal of Principal Andy Dolan of the Fargo North High School. At one point, a student protest was even on the table. Officer Nielsen, who reported the misconduct, was asked if he had ever heard any rumors or allegations about Officer Abel regarding inappropriate contact with a student. He stated he had not. He did state, however, he remembered a time when he filled in for Officer Abel due to an injury in early 2018. The day Officer Abel came back to the school, Officer Nielsen stated three underage students were all over him, hugging Officer Abel and were crying. Officer Nielsen stated this made him uncomfortable when he saw this. A library staffer at the school who was interviewed shared that Officer Abel had a dimly lit office with lava lamps and spinning disco balls. In his opinion, it was not professional and set a different tone. The staffer also observed Officer Abel standing outside of classrooms, flipping people off. He was in uniform while doing this. The staffer also stated that it was not uncommon to see five or six girls around Officer Abel talking in the commons area. The staffer also shared how Officer Abel would routinely walk through the gym during the same period every, every time this same group of girls had gym class. He mentioned that teachers felt there was something going on. When asked how one of the female students found out that Officer Abel was being removed from the school, the student shared the officer, that Officer Abel used the anonymous text-to-tip app to communicate with her. The app was created to allow students to report concerns anonymously. After being told of his removal, Officer Abel would make telephone contact with three different underage Fargo North students, beginning on Saturday, December 26th, at 9:50 PM. He would spend 26 minutes talking on the phone with at least one of the girls. One asked if he was intoxicated during the phone calls, he said yes. One asked how intoxicated he was, he stated, pretty bad. At 11:41 PM that evening, Officer Abel would make a second call to a female student who was only a junior in high school. He stated he did not remember who the third student was, but listed two other students he remembered talking to. When his phone was analyzed, all text messages were deleted. When asked about it, he stated, I wanted nothing to do with it. Yep, I deleted them. He stated he deleted the text messages the next day when he realized what he did. Officer Abel would continue to try and deceive the investigating officer, who could only get him to admit to things after showing proof. At one point, the report states, I asked Officer Abel, if he could see from my perspective that every time a difficult question comes up about honesty or what actually happened, we get answers such as, I don't know, or I was confused. I asked him, if he was interviewing a suspect and he got those type of answers, what would he think? I told him he would probably think they were being deceptive. The investigating officer would go on to speak with the father of one of the girls. The father stated that his daughter advised him that he had, that she had received a call from Officer Abel on December 26th, but she did not answer. The investigating officer was able to confirm that Officer Abel and the girl had spoke on the phone for at least three minutes. She was even willing to lie to her father in order to protect him. On January 11th, 2021, at 3:30 PM, Officer Jason Abel would walk into the Fargo Police Department in plain clothes. His right hand was seen shaking as he spoke. Six days into the investigation, Officer Abel was ready to resign. He used dapple and the George Floyd protest as excuses. He even tried to use the suicide of a student as reasoning for him wanting to leave the department. Officer Abel also went on to state in speaking towards Deputy Renner and Lieutenant Kringley that he had been hiding stuff from the department for years, and he was ashamed to be in the current condition he was in. The most troubling part of all this, and precisely why Fargo PD- and precisely why Fargo PD should not be allowed to investigate themselves, is this line in the report. Their response to him was, or in the report it states, he did not elaborate, nor did we inquire as to what type of things he had been hiding. During an internal investigation that involved the possible corruption of our youth, the department was not interested in figuring out the truth. If, at this point, it is at this point that this investigation should have become criminal, but in the best interest of all parties, it did not. Had this been a teacher at the school, there is no question in my mind that the outcome would have been different. When police are called to our schools because our kids are missing, our hope is that they will come running, not stop for coffee. When we allow them into our schools, we expect them to protect our kids, not prey on them. We cannot continue to allow bad cops to escape accountability. The current process has not only led to the loss of life, it has rewarded bad cops in financial gain and avoiding punishment. It has led to us not knowing how much damage one officer has caused inside of a school. I guarantee that 99.9% of the parents that, who had kids attending the school at the time, weren't made aware that there was a school resource officer behaving inappropriately inside. I can also guarantee that 100% of the parents who had a kid going to Fargo North at the time would have liked to known about this. They have every right to. Since Chief Zabolski has been in office, as a private citizen, I have spent more time with him trying to improve the department than anyone else but the mayor. I've asked that the police department account for mental health hours allotted to the department. I've asked that they track how many hours officers are actually using of said time. I've also asked that certain events automatically trigger health evaluation, mental health evaluations and treatment. It is my belief that no one person should ever hold the police portfolio, especially not the mayor, regardless of whoever is in the seat. Mayor, you either knew of this and did nothing, or this is somehow, it never made it on your radar. It is also my belief that every single one of you should play an active role in improving our police department. Please do not wait until something happens that we can't take back before you all decide to make a change. We need a true independent body with power that can oversee investigations into police misconduct, not the current process that allows officers like Justin Natchitillo, who think of coffee is more important than the safety of a child, to seek further employment. I'm, I've provided each and every single one of you a copy of the James Abel report. And if you can read through it all and still not be moved to reimagine the current process, you have to reevaluate why you have chosen to lead us as a people. The people in this community deserve better. Thank you.
Item 26, Direct the City Attorney's Exam, Chapters 1803 and 1102. This is in response to a variety of people throughout the community who have been complaining about some things that are going on. And we wanted to have a discussion about it with the commissioners. There are some things that we can do as immediate action, but there's something that would need a little bit more work. So I've asked Nicole to explain what's going on, and Chief to be as well.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and thank you as well, Commissioner Garrick, for your service. We, and it was my accident that this got on the consent agenda. It should have been on the primary agenda, so thanks for pulling it. But a number of complaints have been coming into the city of Fargo. I'm sure you've been getting emails to a number of complaints as well. In addition, from our Planning Department, we oversee the sidewalk performing ordinance, our permits. And I recognize there's been kind of messy processes, if you will, and overlapping processes with other departments. And so we have an opportunity now, a little bit more availability now that I'm not working on the pandemic. And this has been on the top of our priority list for the last probably four or five years. Given the number of complaints that are coming in and with the police department's support and the other department's support, we have a proposal for you to work with Nancy, our city attorney's office, to streamline Chapters 11 and 18. A little change from the memo that's in your packet, but we'd like to come back in front of you in two weeks with some recommended short-term edits. And then, and then basically, once we get that position placed, making some brief edits to the, to the ordinances that exist today, then work collaboratively with the Downtown Neighborhood Association, the Downtown Community Partnership, and all of our stakeholders in the community, as well as our city departments. So we can get a little bit more streamlined permitting processes. That's been one of the complaints as well, not only the complaints out in the street, but then internally, the permitting process as well. So Chief might have a few more comments he wants to add, but we're here for any questions.
I think you covered it well. We need to collaborate across departments to address some of these issues a little more efficiently.
So you would like us to give a motion of some sort?
Yeah, so I think a motion to work with the city attorney, and maybe an edit to that would be to come back in two weeks with some recommended edits. We'll work closely with Nancy. If we need a, if we need more than two weeks, we'll be sure to let you know. But I think the police department has some really good ideas on maybe some short-term fixes.
Mr. Germaine, I would move with the amendment to include the two-week time period for the city attorney to come back with some edits.
There's a second.
I'll second it. Can I ask?
Commissioner Peppcar.
A couple of quick things. First of all, so the food carts, like when the bars close, that's actually a good thing, isn't it, Chief? From the perspective of having people eat some food before they go home? I guess that's one conflict to me. And I would say the amplified, anything amplified, to me, that's the issue. I, I think that's the thing that's, that, especially in downtown, if somebody's playing with amplification, that's, that's the concern. That's just a couple of my quick things. Thank you, Mr. Ger.
Commissioner Strand. Thank you. I'm just, if you could remind me the process for buskers to perform on Broadway. I, I think we initiate, implemented some, some permits, maybe some years back. And it's so many days in advance, and a 50-day or something, $50. Help us, tell us what that process is, if you would.
Yeah, so basically, someone comes into the Planning Department office. We have a form to fill out. I don't know the exact parameters. Quite honestly, the process is, is handled through the front desk. And so typically, if we're, we, it probably takes a day or two to process that through the front desk of our office. It has some coordination with the police department and our, actually, our human resources department, because they actually get like a little badge. And then, as they perform outside for that permit, we hand them some components of our, of the code-like things to be mindful of so that they don't get in trouble. And then they're kind of free to, to go out and do the work. So it's about a three-to-four-day process. If someone tries to permit on a Friday afternoon, they might be a little short-changed and have to wait a couple of days or a holiday or something like that. And then just hours of operation and limitations. And quite honestly, the enforcement, whether it's food carts, street performers, or amplified noise, that's one of the things we want to talk through a little bit more internally to figure out where those resource tools are needed and our clarification in the ordinances. We weren't aware until probably about four weeks ago that folks were getting a noise permit for amplified music from the police department, as well as getting a permit from our office. And so that's something that changed in the last five to six years. And, and so as a result, you know, some citizens have been on the poor end of that, that receiver.
And the other part of that, John, is food trucks get permission from the Health Department. So you have three different departments touching this. And then the performers are supposed to be done by 10. But if you go to the police and ask for doing enhanced music with an amplifier, you can go till 11. So there's a discombobulation on hours. And then on the food trucks, it's not exactly clear where they can be, but they're not supposed to be in public right of way, but oftentimes they are. And so the question Bill talked about, Affleck, is that you come up, there's a fight going on on Broadway, and you walk over to the food truck and say, hey, by the way, you're not supposed to be here, or do you go to the fight? So our officers are really working more on crowd control, those types of things. So what we discovered is we have three different departments doing three different things, and it would be best if we made that more organized for ourselves. And then the secondary things on Broadway Square, sometimes you have an event goes on, and that is louder than 55 decibels, but we give permission for that.
One last question, too. Maybe you're going to look at this anyway, and maybe it's not directly tied to this, but recently, we, the city started allowing alcohol to be carried on some downtown events. And I'd be just curious, as you look at this process, to get a report back on the pros and cons, how that's working, if it helps, if it doesn't help, if it worked well or not, if we should do more of it. If, I just would like an overview included in this downtown discussion.
Yeah, and maybe this is a good leeway. Thanks for that, Commissioner Strand. From when the ordinances were written, we can literally, when amendments happen, point to certain cases that caused that, that item to be changed in the ordinance. Unfortunately, some of us have been here long enough to remember that pathway. And so I think there's a, downtown's definitely much different than it was 20 years ago. So I think it's a great opportunity to meet with our partners to see what the actual desire is from all of the people that live and work and play in downtown. We also have, coincidentally, our downtown and focus consultants are coming back to help us do kind of a report card, if such, on the downtown and focus plan itself, kind of a small contract. But since this came up so readily a few weeks ago, we thought this is a perfect thing to add to, as, to our outreach in probably a town hall-type of meeting to get some more engagement on this topic. We know people have lots, lots to say about the topic.
And Mayor, I'll just add one, one more thing. There's a lot of discussion around the country about how much surveillance you have on communities and pro, goods and, good and bad results of, of watching the people. But I would suggest we also look at the discussion of cameras and surveillance and pros and cons and goods and bads of, of that approach and whether there's enhancements we could consider or not in our downtown overview.
Now, John, I didn't know if you're bringing up that Commissioner Garrick had a lot of feelings about cameras downtown, but I'll let it pass at this time because I wouldn't want Tony to extend his career here. But you had quite a comment. Any other discussion?
Mr. Germaine.
Commissioner Preston.
So one of the things that Nicole and I were talking about earlier is the inconsistent enforcement of these ordinances as well. So hopefully, we'll have some conversation about that as well.
Commissioner Strand.
And Commissioner Preston, as long as you're mentioning that, noting for us the, the gaps we have relative to state law. You know, so it might be some moments where we have to advocate to the legislature to address local concerns if, if, if we're not allowed to do it at the local level.
Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Hi.
Peppcar?
Hi.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yep.
Mr. Garrick, do you have any last words?
Oh, boy. Yeah, it's been a fun ride, seven years. I thought it'd be funny to wear my same suit from my first day to my last day. It wasn't funny, it didn't fit. The necktie was too tight, the shoes fit. But, you know, I first want to just say thank you to the, to the people of Fargo for, for letting me do this job for seven years. For those people who support me, thank you for that. And for those who didn't support me, I hope at least I was able to communicate why I vote the way I vote and, you know, create videos and go and talk in public and, and tell you why I do the things that I do. The staff has been fantastic. I've been very lucky to work with the departments I've been able to work with. It's always been a pleasure to work with those guys all across the city of Fargo. And then thanks to the commissioners, too, since I've been here for seven years, I've worked with seven different commissioners, which seems like a lot, but it goes by fast. So all of you have your own talents and your own perspectives. And I think that the discourse that we have here is very valuable. I think that disagreeing in public is very valuable, much more valuable than agreeing all the time in public. So I think that what we had here for the last seven years, while sometimes it was, you know, there was tension and things like that, I think that's, that, that's valuable for the people of Fargo to see that. And I hope that you guys are, you're going to ask some of the questions that I ask while I'm not here, you know, would you still build the thing and that kind of thing? But thanks a lot to everybody, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Strand, any events?
Well, we have somebody with a birthday tomorrow, and I won't, you know, make too much, draw too much attention to the mayor's birthday tomorrow.
Thank you.
In case anybody runs into Mayor Mahoney tomorrow, we can wish him a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Mr. Germaine.
Thank you. Commissioner Preston.
If I could just make a comment to wrap up a little bit on what we were talking about earlier. You had indicated, looking at the rules and that we have some conversation around it. I would put in a request as chair of the commission that you would come back with some suggestions in regards to agenda management, as well as public comments, and come back probably to the next meeting if you can. That would be great.
Yeah, and part of that, I think we have to have a little internal discussion as well, because I think there's some of us see it one way or a different way. And I can bring suggestions to you, but I, I do think it's an opportunity. We do have public input, and Wes perhaps needed more than two and a half minutes to say what he wanted to say. So we just need to have a discussion about that. And I, I think that would be good for all of us to have. The other thing, considering instituting, is Grant Forks does on the off week, sometimes has meetings with department heads to find out what's going on. The city has so much going on on a yearly basis that sometimes it might be good, just on an informal basis, to have discussions. So Corridor Study on 10th and 11th, or 10th and University. I know, Tony, you'd have some ideas on bike paths, and we kind of could get into some discussions. But I think it's also to get information back from the staff. Is what are the neighbors saying? What do they want? What's going on? But maybe a little bit more of this off-the-dias, where we can have conversations with our department heads and find out what's going on. And they sometimes do that more in a work session, so you kind of get more of that. So I'd like us to consider that. But I'd be happy, go full bore on this and get some recommendations if you'd like. Thank you. Any other business? Is there a motion adjourned?
No move.
There's a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.